I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to Appeal. Today is Wednesday, July 10th, 2024.
Second.
Member Dan.
Aye.
Member Loeb.
Aye.
Member Hoplin.
Aye.
Member Cook.
Aye.
Chair Brewster.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, welcome, everybody. I see we have a pretty packed audience for our meetings today. Some people can come out. We have two applications on our agenda today. One is to Courtney Circle. It's a minor site plan for a garage. That's a building in the backyard. And we have an application from the Pittsburgh Fire Department. I'd like to start with to Courtney Circle. And is the applicant in the audience?
Two conflicts.
Oh, conflicts of interest. Why did I forget? I forgot all of them. Thank you, Derek.
No problem.
First of all, does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not. Me neither.
Yeah.
No.
I do not. Okay. So we'll start with to Courtney Circle. And for this one, we will have a public hearing tonight. So anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on the record, we're going to start by having the applicant present their application. We may have some questions from the board. We'll typically open a public hearing and a public is able to give some comments. We have received several comments via email already and taken a look at those. And then the board will deliberate on the application. For the fire department, I was not planning on opening a public hearing tonight. I was interested in hearing them present what they're proposing to do so we can think about their project and decide how we're going to proceed with our next steps for that project. So that was my goal with that one was to hear a presentation of that. So that said, to Courtney Circle is first one on the agenda. And if the applicant is here, would you like to come up and present the project? Now, first of all, are you the owner or?
I am a contractor. I'm working with Bob Zjak who's dealing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for letting me present. What I'm proposing with Bob Zjak is ask me to present on his behalf is the construction of an accessory building for storage of two automobiles that are currently sitting in the driveway. It's attached from the house towards the rear. It's inside the setback. It's 12 feet by 40 feet. So the two vehicles are going end to end. Intended to side it in a similar fashion to what's there so it blends in the house. Front would be seated, the side would be on the back. Sign with the same review as the sign in the back. So it should blend.
Okay.
Due to some, kind of looking at the code and finding kind of a discrepancy, the applicant will need to come in and find the commands. The applicant will need to come in and apply for variance or an oversized accessory structure. So we opened the public hearing tonight, but he has to come back and apply for variance because the second garage as a garage based on the code, I don't believe you can override this application, as it says.
Okay, so, all right. So moving forward, we could not approve this application until they get a variance. This is your current interpretation. Okay.
Yeah, because it's over 400 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Did you, were the owner have anything else you wanted to present at this time?
No, that was in a, a suburb of minor site plans. But I understand that the variance based on what you just said. The others on these structures just don't get it.
Okay, now, are you a contractor? Are you an architect?
I'm a contractor.
Okay. And so I wasn't sure if there was an architect or that did the drawings or not.
Yes, there are. Yeah.
Okay.
His name is Steve Troy.
Okay, so, okay, so that, okay, that one is stamped. And then we don't have the building elevations.
I have.
You have one. Oh, you have them there. Okay.
So this is the front of the, of the structure.
Yeah.
What's the date of this?
We use a 5/28. It's a, it's a.
Yeah. Yeah, we have. We just have a very small.
So it's, I mean, we're trying to maintain a low profile and not make it too tall. You know, it's eight foot to the eaves. It has a gable end, cedar on the face. And like I said, this is all behind, already siding on the balance of it. It steps down, it steps down the hill. You can see it's come down in the rear. It's a little bit higher, way about two foot, two foot seven in the back, higher from the, is it the front? Sitting on a foundation, gravel floor.
Okay, so the other, the other side of it would look the same? It just wouldn't have a door?
Correct. No windows.
Okay.
This is the door on the one side just for access.
Okay.
One single man door.
Okay.
Not bid on the exterior. There's no light there or anything like that. It's just storage buildings.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does, any, people have any questions? Or members at this time?
None, no.
Okay, so shall we just open the public hearing? Here are people have to say.
Actually, I'm not sure you know the answer to this, but there is a garage on the property.
That's correct.
And are cars stored in the garage?
Correct. Yes, there are. There are two cars in the garage.
And so this is, so this would be storage for two, two more?
Two more. They're, they're currently sitting under covers in the driveway.
Okay.
And they're, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Or a site plan.
Or a site plan, correct.
Oh, I'll second.
Member Loeb.
Aye.
Member Shannon.
Aye.
Member Phil.
Aye.
Member Hoplin.
Aye.
Chair Brewster.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, so, does anyone attending online?
We have attendees online, no one with their hands raised.
Okay, so let me, I'll present some instructions for everybody here. We'll start with people in the building. If anyone would like to issue some public comments, please raise your hand and state your name and address and state your comments. We'd appreciate it if you can keep them under five minutes or so.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. That's what Alexandria said.
Because they're confined, yeah.
You go for three? What do we want, three or five?
I think, but Alexandria says three, it's three.
All right. Well, anyway. And then after we hear from the people in the room, if there's anyone online that is attending that would like to give us some comments, you can click the raise thing, it's the raise hand button, and we will call on you and you can speak. And so let's start with anyone in the room.
I'll start first because I have one via email that asks for the book to read.
Okay.
This is from David Gaskin, 12 North Main Street. Dear members of zoning and planning board, I write to you to express my concerns regarding the proposed restriction of a 12 by 39 detached garage at two Courtney Circle. As a concerned resident of the Village of Pissford, I believe this proposal violates several sections of the Village Code and Design Standards. Firstly, according to section, chapter 210 dash 20.7B of the Village Code, on the use of lots and subdivisions, no more than one garage and one additional accessory structure should be permitted on each residential lot. The property at two Courtney Circle already has an attached garage and the addition of a detached garage would constitute a second garage which is not allowed. Furthermore, section, chapter 210 dash 20.7 states that only one accessory structure exclusive of a private garage is permitted per lot and its area shall not exceed 120 square feet. The proposed garage with a size of 468 square feet significantly exceeds this limit. Additionally, page 77 of the Village Pittsburgh Design Standards advises us against adding an additional detached garage or similarly sized storage structure to a property that already has an attached garage. The current proposal contradicts this recommendation which is designed to maintain the aesthetic of the structural integrity of our residential areas. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the board to reject the proposal for the detached garage at two Courtney Circle. It is crucial to adhere to our Village Codes and standards to ensure the continued preservation and order of redevelopment of our community. Thank you for your attention to this matter. David Gaskin. And pardon me, 20 Courtney Circles is the address.
Which is property behind this, property in question. Okay, if anyone in the room would like to submit comments, you can raise your hand. Yes, so just state your name and address, please, and.
Charles Oner, three Courtney Circle. My comments may go more than three minutes. We did a, we did a petition in the neighborhood, got a lot of signatures. All the people, nobody protested the, you know, nobody objected to the petition. They were enthusiastic about it. But, and there's a lot of people that worked on getting the petition worded correctly. So this is the original.
Okay.
All of the signatures. And David's letter is on there. He was going to be available today and I just wanted to make sure that.
So pass this around to people on the table. Okay.
Any other property through the record, you said?
That's it, right there.
Oh.
Yeah, maybe we should hand it to her first and make some copies.
Let's, let's have.
You want to make some copies for everybody?
Yeah, I don't have many copies.
Yeah.
Okay, great. The objection's focused on, I've been in the neighborhood for 35 years and I didn't, I'm.
Just going to make sure.
Yeah, okay.
Nope.
I've been in the neighborhood 30, my wife and I have been in the neighborhood for 35 years. We've raised a family. We've seen it evolve, change. Residential neighborhoods are the backbone of, of the village. And storage for an unoccupied property is kind of contrary to that. Well, it's not kind of contrary, it's contrary to that. I don't object to the house being unoccupied, but adding structure for another use and diminishing quality of the neighbors around it. Because the question with the development means, does it says them? And the application wants three, three feet from the hot line. What happens to the trees? And I know that the tree cover in residential areas matters. So that was uncovered, the discussion of the application. And it was voiced by, those concerns were voiced by a number of people who signed it because they'll see when you read the, try to state it for me, that the tree cover matters. It also separates the house and it helps with drainage. Because of different elevations on Courtney Circle, drainage really matters because they're on, on, around, around three, we get it from Jefferson Road.
Yeah.
You know, we run on water seats through it. That's just the way it is. So my point would be, to say, to speak quickly, lots of trees, neighbors, uh, not happy about, you know, now we have no renters. And I heard that was new, but that's not pertinent to the application. We want to preserve the residential quality of the area. We have a lot of little kids. It's a really great family neighborhood. We've only been here 35 years, which I say it because it's like, it's weird because they went by like that. Maybe it's inappropriate for me to put it this way. Sell the house, build the storage in another place or build it where you live or join the neighborhood, build it and really pay attention to the tree cover.
Okay.
We got lots of participation in the, in numbers, also the three pages. A lot of people weren't around. People walked up to carrying around this, the petition to sign it because they didn't want to get missed. So there's a lot of strong feeling that this is inappropriate use of land in a residential neighborhood and there's not enough space to accept it. Because what would stop them then from putting more cars in the driveway? You know, we got covered cars in the driveway. You know, for years, our current friend is now. The woman who owned the property is here since past. You wouldn't leave a camera on the front driveway, but we've got covered cars in the driveway. And the cars may be registered, but they're not ready. You know, nobody cares if there's five cars in the driveway. They're coming and going all the time. So all these aspects give everyone, I've talked to, a very negative outlook on the impact on the residential character of the neighborhood. So it's a strong statement on saying there really no grounds to approve this application.
All right, well, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to other residents. And we appreciate this. We will take these comments into consideration. I think we should spend some time to read this later, but let's, okay. Next person?
I have a family and I'm also in the neighborhood almost 40 years. I have, I, I'm sorry, yes, 40 years. Sure. I have pictures of these cars at different times during the year, three of them, not two. So I don't know what else is going to end up in our front yards. But I have pictures of three of them on the side with them, these, you know, green covers.
Covers.
And my concern, including the winter, and my concern, and you'll see on the side, at least three always. And so the concern is, is this a business? What's going on? Is this, are these his cars? Is he charging other people to park in his driveway in our front yards? And then, so two are going to go and then what's going to end up in the front yard again? So perhaps you can help me. I don't know if we're talking about codes or ordinances, but who else do I talk to without discontinuing the conference?
The code enforcement officer is the person you talk to.
Yeah. The reality of it, are covered cars, there is no code against it.
Oh, it's a work.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can also talk to the trustees and ask them to amend zoning codes.
Wonderful. Okay, so you're seeing what is described as something that may be solved by adding a garage. And yet this could persist. And then the other point, which I think you've made, is this house is not occupied. It's used for storage. And as a, as a neighborhood person, if I was on either side of that house and it was only being used for storage, how would somebody know what was going on in the house if there were critters, destruction or anything else and then impacted both sides? So is there a code or an ordinance against or about unoccupied homes?
No, but it is made.
If you're concerned about maintenance, again, you can talk to the code inspector. He can inspect houses if he has a valid complaint and justification for it, but that doesn't mean he will. It has to, he has to deem it significant enough to do so.
I have pictures. Anyone else have pictures? Unless you need those.
Should we get a copy for the record? Copy for the record, yeah.
Okay, so you've got several different dates, several different seasons. I think there's one that's winter as well. So sure. So you've got your different dates over here?
Yeah, I'm surrendering to her.
Thank you.
You can make maybe one copy for the record?
That was one, you know.
No. Okay, I got one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this?
Hi, I have a, I need to know, like, I haven't seen the plans really properly, so this is a completely different kind of perspective, but not that I'm not really for it, but, but I don't want to understand, like, okay, so even if nobody's occupying it, when somebody does occupy it or if they do sell it and they do become a person that owns the property and they're living there, how are they actually accessing it? Is there like pollution that would really bother people if they are accessing into like a four car garage situation? Because that's something that we do know that is like really, really bothers them. So I think that if this is done, I think that you really do have to look at that kind of perspective that it's not just what's happening now, it's what's happening in the future. And if it is, I don't, again, I don't, I don't know how the cars would angle in and out, but I think the best thing that you guys should look at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Yes.
I'm here near, I'm at four Courtney Circle. I am the neighbor directly adjacent to this property. I just wanted to stick for records some photos that I've taken. I really wanted to get across the tree cover. This is a picture from the front facade. This is our lot line. I can't tell you whose trees they are. I think they belong to both of us. I don't know how you could possibly build a 40 foot long garage here and not affect the roots or the tree cover.
Okay.
There's pictures from my yard showing the shade the trees provide. And there's also pictures of, again, many cars constantly in the driveway that are now being stored in tents in the backyard. This is not something that should be in a residential neighborhood. So I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'll speak.
Okay.
I'm in this, I'm in the, you know, I'm Lisa Cole, 44 South Main Street. I'm also a resident, I'm a trustee. So my, my real passion and my role is to listen to residents. It bothers me that the resident or the person who owns the building didn't show up tonight. It bothers me that that building is not occupied and it bothers me that we're using it as storage. We all know that living in the Village of Pissford is a very, very sight catcher and I don't think that we can afford using our land for storage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, right? Okay, and anyone online? Anyone online would like to speak, please click the raise hand button.
No hands at this time.
Okay.
Hey, Dave Marshall, trustee 67 South Main. I just want to, again, reinforce Lisa's comments that there's a lot of residents that have come and spoke up. Residential character is important. How we live in our community is important. How we, as you think about these homes in a circle, when you think about the backyards and how they interconnect, creating a building that essentially intersects that structure of general creative design of homes in a community and residential character, I think is important to consider as you move forward in your decision.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from any other person or the applicant? Okay. Who'd like to start?
You can close the public hearing, please.
All right, now it's still open. It may be kept open for another meeting if we go forward with the variance discussion. So.
That would be a new notice for variance.
Right.
So I'll just throw it out there. First of all, do you want time to read this? I know I read Mr. Gaskin's letter and I thought that was, I looked into those code citations quite a bit and I, that was notable in my opinion. Let me find my printout of some of those citations.
I have it, I can talk.
Okay.
Have one of your copies.
All right. Yes. So this was what he's documented here, page 77 of our historic design standards. And what he says on page 77 is, and I can pass this around to everybody. Hopefully everyone got a chance to take a look at this. But it clearly does say to avoid adding an additional detached garage or sim- or similarly sized storage structure to a property that already has an attached garage.
Yeah.
And he also made the code citation that you can't build a second garage. It's maximum of one garage per lot. And even if someone's going to claim, well, it's not a garage, it's a storage shed, these historic design standards, I think they clearly ban both.
It's got a garage door on it.
It's got a garage door, it's got a driveway going into it. So that's, that's my thoughts on this, is I, I see this as problematic.
Yeah.
Great.
And the other thing, so if you're on board with that, we can't approve this tonight if there's a variance, but I think we can deny it. So, so I would make a motion to deny this application on the grounds of it not complying with the rehabilitation standards for historic buildings, page 77 as cited, and also for the comment of not having, not allowing two garage use for, on a residential lot.
Yeah, I, I think I would also know that there's significant opposition from members of the neighborhood who would be most affected by it. And, you know, I think the trees are a concern as well.
Yes, construction of it close to the lot line could damage the trees in that area.
And, and the, the variance, even if it were part of the application, it is not just a matter of inches or a couple of feet. It's a sizable variance.
A sizable variance.
Which I.
But that's not before us here.
Not before, not before us, but I think it's also, we have seen the dimensions and.
Yeah.
It's too big.
Okay. Anyway, I have a motion on the floor. Does anyone want to add to it or second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Member Hoplin.
Aye.
Member Cook.
Aye.
Member Loeb.
Aye.
Member Shannon.
Aye.
Chair Brewster.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So that is the conclusion of two Courtney Circle. So thank you, everyone, for your bringing these points to us. We listened and we do our job best when we hear from the public, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So the fire department has a PowerPoint that they want to do.
Yep.
Which just means four of you will have to come up with a plan. I'm going to start, is that a project? Yeah. Whatever, whatever you want to do.
That's true. All right, we're going to move on to the next question, everybody. Good evening, members of the board, right, this is Jared Luss. Normally, sad about where it takes everybody, but not here with these people. I'm here tonight to do an assessment of the fire commissioner for the district, with me is Paul Shackle, also with his data, she does give you a couple of words from the town. He here, is here as well in this, on your capacity as a fire commissioner for the district. As some of you know, the fire district has been engaged in a facilities master plan process for a number of years. It's, in part with our desire, as many people in this room know, there's been concern in the house that's right outside the avenue. And we can, if we can talk a little bit about this, one little bit of the facilities master plan, gives you a background of why we have done, we've done the master plan, the fire district adopted a fire, a facilities master plan back in, what is it, June of 2023, if you can go forward, please, I want to hear. Again, what is the fire district? Some people may not know what it is. It's the same, it's akin to a school district. Instead of educating our children, we are, we provide all the fire facilities, the fire stations and the firefighters necessary to provide fire service to the district, fire district. Notably, as many of you know, we've got some staff, we've got the equipment, the fire apparatus, the buildings, and the policies and procedures that are adopted by the board of fire commissioners, which are seven of them. They are elected by their residents of the fire district. The volunteers, unlike other surrounding fire departments, we are completely volunteer. This is a little aged and we put this PowerPoint together as part of that master plan to be at 75 back to members, they're up to 85. We are packing for gills, those issues regarding our building that you can touch on in the facilities master plan. Again, we are blessed of all I can say in our community. Again, we are blessed of all I can say in our community, we have the strongest volunteer fire company in Monroe County. It's free, right, the staffing is free. That saves us all a ton of money, and it's our goal, of course, to maintain that volunteer fire service as long as we can. Go ahead. So the fire district, Pittsburgh Fire District covers basically the town of Pittsburgh except the northern boundary. Some of it's covered by the Brighton Fire District and some of it's covered by the East Rogers Fire Department, approximately both of the courses. But everywhere you see is white, it's covered by the fire districts, it's our responsibility, our obligation. Facts are collected to maintain the equipment. You can see there are the facts of our, of our fire district, twenty-one point seven square miles, not really since twenty-seven thousand. There are two fire stations, eight Monroe Avenue, been around on, been in the firehouse for thirty-five years. My father just retired after fifty-seven years, and his father, and his father before them, they're all natural fire company. grew up in the fire station and now basically where I live, there's one, Station Two, across from Manhattan High School that was constructed in nineteen seventy-two. A lot about what we're going to talk about tonight is surrounding Station One and the process to build that firehouse in nineteen eighty-six. Those that have been around the village a long time may very well remember the process in nineteen eighty-six, how the firehouse seems to be, where it's located. You know, district administrator, maybe you've met him, about Locken, business manager, Mike Klausler, he takes care of the finances of the operation. And then we have two every day, Monday through Friday, essentially nine to five, or seven thirty to five. We have two part-time fire stations, and it's each fire station to take care of the equipment, the maintenance and stuff, the equipment needs inside the fire. What happens is volunteers, we get involved, essentially text on the phone, we walk into the firehouse and then expect the fire trucks to start, the relevant equipment to be ready to go, and that's what these people do. And in the middle, of course, is our beloved nineteen North Main Street. We purchased that, sorry, we purchased nineteen North Main Street in nineteen ninety-five. It's because we needed additional property in the backyard parking lot, but there's another, and as we decided what, how to deal with this property, we'll talk about some property, Brighton streets that we had in our current site. Do you proceed forward, Ellen, to here? All right, so again, I don't want to bore you with the statistics, but then this is twenty twenty-two. Calls in twenty twenty-three, roughly the same, I think, about fourteen more fire calls roughly in twenty twenty-three. But you can see there's a wide variety of fire calls. Most important thing is the upper room, see, the average age of our Pittsburgh firefighters is fifty-one years old. So although we have the most active group of volunteers, this is twenty, this is probably changed. My father is seventy-nine, he got out, my son got in, he's eighteen, just by that, it's probably lower than that. But I would say roughly, our fire department is fifty years old, that's concerning. We've seen, you know, the demands on firefighters, the number of calls can continue to go up. Facilities, timing, and training that is required, it's becoming more and more difficult to get, to get volunteers, particularly ones like, trying to take credit for being, being around three to five years. I would say if you save the average firefighter today, twins as in for five or seven years, and people are much more transient than they were, that's why I was getting people moving into the building, moving to the town. You know, a great, great group of firefighters, but again, our average age is fifty-one, and those of us that are just relying on free labor, that's concerning. As you say, in twenty twenty-two, the average fourteen and a half firefighters for a call, about eighty-five, you can build it last COVID, everybody working from home. So it's easy for them to get out of, or call, or be traditionally, I don't know, very difficult to get people during the day. But it's been a challenge, we have a lot of municipal employees that work in the builds around the town, we cover, we follow that, that's the care of the building, and mostly just, people that are traditionally municipal employees who haven't, who cannot buy property in the town. So if it was a backhaul during the day, it's not, it's always a task, it's rough. Go ahead. All right, facilities master plan, we've been talking about what we need, it was had, had this property. What could we do with this property, what do we need to do with Station One, which is what we were talking about in nineteen eighty-six firehouse. It's insubstantially remarkably the same position, same interior, same everything since nineteen eighty-six. Trouble with, and a lot of things have changed with our equipment, the number of people, the type of equipment we need to store and we use. And what's happened particularly before, in the last few years, is we've made a series of small improvements. We're putting new sidewalks, putting in new stairs, but there's been nothing major inside of the firehouses, particularly Station One, the heating equipment, etc., has, it's, they're, I have no idea, what is it, fourteen plus twenty-four, it's thirty-eight years old, it's reached its, at the end of its probable useful life. Nobody wants to make huge investments in the infrastructure, typically decide what we need to do. And so what the board decided two years ago is that they needed to figure out what the plan was. We have this building, we have two firehouses, already got an aging fire company. If you're going to make investments in property, or you're going to care for what, unfortunately, appears to be inevitable, that sooner or later, people in the next five, ten years, fifteen years, whatever, as long as we can keep the volunteers, eventually we're going to need to hire career firefighters, either part-time or full-time. Our firehouses are built for volunteers, there's no bad, there's no bad news, right? These are, these are the things, if you're going to invest millions of dollars in operating a bringy facility of the speed, you have to ask yourself, what is our master plan? Are we going to do this, or are we going to do this right so that we don't invest money in terror damage? And so this is, this is the fifty thousand foot level of analyzing exactly what we're doing. And again, we needed a professional, we hired San Tech to come in and sort of help us analyze our existing facilities, what it means. Go ahead. So again, I've already covered this, there's a lack of sufficient storage administrative space in the firehouse. There's ventilation issues in Station One, firefighter, deer, anybody that's been, anytime walking by the front of the firehouse. I urge you, maybe if you get a minute after this, stop raining, you can adjourn the meeting, everybody just take a walk. We have eighty-five firefighters, the coats and helmets are hanging off the end of coat racks. There isn't sufficient space in our firehouse for that. And we have, based on the fire district's property from nineteen eighty-six, we have a lack of sufficient parking and access to Station One that's been solved with the purchase of Bank of America. Well, let's go forward to showing you that. Should I get a pointer?
I don't remember, yeah.
I think I can, what you see here is, you're standing on the road, and I'm looking in the firehouse, I am going to take.
Cheers, I can, you want me to, I can point to me, it's on here, if you want me to.
I think it's, it's important to understand that the bank, the bank parking lot. Let me back up. At the bottom right of this photo, you see the words access easement to bank. That white property, that white area, including the east, roughly the yellow area to the left, was the footprint to the original Pittsburgh Firehouse. We grew out of that, in nineteen eighty-six, we needed more space. Those of you that, you know, want to take up a lot of time, the fire district entered into a purchase and sale agreement in a couple of houses, the end of Monroe Avenue, opposite the end of South Main Street. We created a big piece of property, went all the way back to Canaan up to say that our neighbors became restless with the concept of not knocking down two houses, building a firehouse next to the command, as an understatement. Originally, we'd gone to what was Security Trust Bank in nineteen eighty-six. In nineteen eighty-five, asked to purchase the property next to the bank. They declined our offer. So that's what we went down to the bank, or went down Monroe Avenue, we needed more space. Only then, after we had first, had a purchase and sale agreement with the neighboring properties, and some neighbors got upset, the wealthy people that lived on Monroe Avenue that had very large bank accounts and Security Trust Bank became upset and made some calls to the president of the Security Trust. It's amazing how later conversations, the property became that. But as we operated out of that first original nineteen, that little firehouse, we had an agreement with Security Trust Bank via letter for the nineteen sixties. They said that we could use that back driveway, which is near North Main Street, the yellow line, and come somewhere. And we could park, and their parking lot, for fire calls, for firefighters, for training off hours. It's like permission. We relied on that letter until March twenty twenty-three. That was all we did. And so the issue, and when we bought the property to the left, we built our firehouse, they built the ATM port that goes here, and we, right, and we granted to the bank, and he's been across our property, the fire district property, the yellow to the bottom, that was our property, so they could get to their parking lot. So that was the transaction in nineteen eighty-six. As you look at the plans for the nineteen eighty-six project, there is a notation that said that they were supposed to provide us with an access and utilities from North Main Street to the back of our firehouse. Very important, and don't even belabor the point, they never gave us the access. I think they said, we've got your letter, that's all you need. That access from North Main Street is, was vital in sectioning the operation of the fire. Because when there's a fire call, right, folks drive from their house, anybody coming from the north, anybody coming from the south, or anybody coming from the east, they can either turn down North Main Street to pull in, they can come up North Main Street to pull in, or they could come, come north on South Main Street, if they can get the right turn or the left turn arrow, they can go and they can get in the firehouse. We had to maintain that access, because we had to wait for everything to turn right or turn left. The delay at this center set, particularly during the day, we were going to lose minutes, right? Minutes count when you're trying to get the trucks on the road. So when the bank closed one day, and we said, oh, this could be a Chipotle, you know, it could be anything, and we could lose our access to this. So again, that is, that freaked us out. But one of the reasons why we could never really deal with the nineteen North Main Street house is because we knew we didn't have legal access to North Main Street, so we got this letter. We were unwilling to convey nineteen North Main Street in case they ever turned into a Chipotle and we couldn't get the property. We would have access to the back of the firehouse. And it's, it's worth noting, obviously, this is the original plan for our Station One, so there is now access to the lower parking lot that's here with nineteen North Main Street front. People often ask us, why, why can't you convey, why can't you do something with the house? Because we had no legal obligation to get into our firehouse, we were unwilling to, we relied on the letter and etc. When the bank went for sale, or it closed, we, I don't want to exaggerate, I believe it was approximately three years of us trying to deal with the back of our.
Longer than that, probably closer to five.
Right, and sending them letters, hey, we're here, we'd like to, we'd like to take care of it. Then in the last year, we got the facilities master plan and said we need to preserve access, and we started some preliminary steps in the eminent domain procedure. Again, our goal was to preserve parking and maintain that access, no mention of the bank buildings, etc. So when I started that process with the eminent domain, we sent them a letter and said, we, Fraser used to look at the pursuant to the eminent domain law, and I had a lawyer from the Bank of America in North Carolina, they called him. What are you doing? And I said, well, how about this, here's the seventeen letters, this is that, and here's our facilities master plan. Amazing, we got on the phone with him, looked at some Google Maps, he said, put them in the office. So they wouldn't settle us just the driveway or the parking, the access, they, we wanted to give you the whole thing. So in March of this year, we bought a bank, right, and here we are. And so our goal here is that, and let me just, if you can, we can talk a little bit about it. In the process of closing on that bank, we were having a survey on this property, I think, since the fifties. And I know you guys are standard to code, but anybody who knows, as I said in my application, the stairway that goes from Pittsburgh, goes down the stairs into the bottom of this one North Main Street currently owned by the Newcomers, I know Mr. Newcomer owned it in nineteen seventy. They built a stairway on two people's property, kind of revolves, the half the stairs are registered fighters, and half the stairs are on one North Main Street. And so we didn't openly cut it until we did a survey in twenty twenty-three. So one of the requests is, we'd like to get Mr. Newcomer another half the stairs. The fire district doesn't want to open the stairs, we want to be responsible for everything, and I don't think that that's true. So one of our requests is to adjust the lot line to have the entire stairwell be on Mr. Newcomer's property. We're prepared, ready to leave him over the property pursuant to that, to get that on the very best way. Next, we have that bottom part, access easement to the bank, we have a little parking lot. It's actually currently, as we see, part of the eight Monroe Avenue parcel, which is the firehouse. Now that we own the parking lot, which is here, it used to be the bay, we want to merge that little parking lot that sits on Monroe Avenue with the, with the parking lot to the north, so you have, I'm not changing anything except we want to take the ATM port down and then the base sidewalk. We want to just keep it as it is, keep the lights that are there, not change it, only take that, that structure down, patch where the, where the sidewalk is, was, patch it with some asphalt, re-spray it, basically in some of the big angle, just more efficient to get a few more spots, and stop. The status quo. Because we never thought a million years we were going to own a bank. All we wanted to do was make sure we could pull the front of our main street and parks and cars. So now we own this bank, and we spent a million dollars, nine hundred and change buying the building, and we have the facilities master plan, a lot of work to do. The other firehouse, Station Two, needs process Madden, needs a lot of work. All is spearheading the retainer of an architect. We haven't hired, even hired an architect, the architect doesn't even know we own the Bank of America. We have a long process to have to figure out what, what, anything we're going to do, any of these buildings. You have no idea, other than we know we own the bank, and we've even got some serious work to do with the fire. So if you can go forward. So again, this is a bunch of the materials, the master plan that are suggested that were required both for fire stations. We have to figure out, we now have square floors in the bank, maybe some admin offices can go in there. Maybe it would be less work than these that happen than the other, more reconfiguration, maybe we need to put, go look. Next time you're walking through the village, clock by the glass doors that are in front of the firehouse, there is not that much space between the ladder truck bucket and the door. And there's not that much space between the sides of the door and the firehouse. It's true that this is, that's the size of traffic, they made that a lot, like in nineteen eighty-six, but it is that's it. So we need to figure out whether we're going to, so one of the proposals is that if we had a bigger boxes, that we might have a bigger bay. At the end of the fire station here, it's wider, it's that trucking the outlet on Monroe Avenue, more safe. We had a, we have a significant hex with a fire truck pulling out and, and caught the side of the fire truck that had a lot of damage. We can't continue to operate like this, I just can't, you can't connect, you can't walk, anybody can't see what that is. Again, it's packed at the locker, and the people are trying to get dressed, there's not this much room between the back of that truck and the locker for people trying to get dressed, it's just out of space, so keep going forward. I believe that there should be, there should be a copy, a full copy of the master plan here in the little shop. You did have a public here at.
It's on our website.
This, this was part of the preliminary master plan, right, that you saw here. This, this is what people, this was a tentative suggestion based on what, what is happening. But you can see that we, because there's great interest, thus conveying nineteen North Main Street to the house to be preserved. We talked about southern, but in the back of the carriage house that you see here is used, there's people using it right now for needing, etc. So we want to merge the back half of nineteen North Main Street into the firehouse, part of the parcel eight Monroe Avenue. So we've got access to that, it's not a parcel without access, we'll merge it, the firehouse, it should then become. We'll merge it, and the firehouse, it should then become our eight Monroe Avenue. Again, nineteen North Main Street, we subdivided off. We had it designed by our engineer to meet all code in terms of size, et cetera. We do think, we'll have to put it for sale. We're hopeful that it would be one of the office spaces that are permitted in the village, given the use, you have a potential conflict with the rear, which might be used in the back fire station for meetings and stuff, right? We don't want people pouring two year olds' bed in the fifth year, firefighters meeting in the backyard. In a perfect world, it might be, you know, but we're open to any use. But we built, we built a lot that was large enough, because if you recall, for example, if it's at least a quarter of an acre, it could be, I think it's about limited office. So we built the, we designed a subdivision to comply with some of the requirements to have a limited office in that building and not be totally just residential. But of course, once the district sells it, they have no control over what could happen. We wanted to provide maximum flexibility for reuse. It's, I think it's twenty-two seven acres, and the minimum required for limited offices is twenty-two five. Very thoughtful with that. We need to reserve both the utility easement and access easement because actually, known as old Betsy, nineteen twenty-five, a fire engine in the village Pittsburgh bought for fire service in nineteen twenty-five. That's how, that's where it's stored in that barn, and that's how we get it out. And so we may change that when we do our facilities master, you know, do our design, whether we can get it out of a different way, et cetera. But for the time being, we need to be able to reserve and get access out to the firehouse. So it's all been planned, it's all been, we've had the property appraised with this, we know what it's worth. The Fire District has retained a real estate broker to market the property. There's a key step here, obviously, to be able to subdivision. But because it's a government-owned piece of property by the Fire District, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. For us to sell that piece of property, yes, we put a mandatory referendum for residents of the Fire District. There are some people in the community, and that could be, I don't know, Dr. Hershey. I hope not. But again, we built it to the right size to be its own, but even as soon as the board approves it, if we can't get the public to go, yes, we can't sell it. Circle back. We also, just the planning board's fully aware. Every year, we have to bid our insurance and our firefighter insurance. Only two insurance companies in New York provide insurance to firefighters, probably because of the specialty work that they do and the big fire drives, they all they post with it. One of them is Utica National, and the other is another one I can't remember. This year, as we do every year, we're responsible, we send out our requested proposals for insurance for the Fire District to cover our property, the firefighters or equipment. One, huge, to bid because we have a vacant house. So the other one said, you better get this figured out. So we're in a situation where we feel like our insurance, because of this vacant house, this gentleman cannot handle firefighters or the insurance.
So just to be clear on that, if I can ask a clarifying question. Are you saying that they're refusing to insure just the vacant house? Or they're refusing to insure the entire thing because of the vacant house?
Well, it's property we own, so we have to have liability. So it's a fire, they won't quote it because we have a vacant house.
Got it, okay.
Didn't help, we have a couple of vacant bank owners, you know, right? And, but they specifically, et cetera, you've got to get that resolved. Particularly Utica let us, gave us another proposal and said, we've got to get this figured out. So we have to get rid of this thing and do it. There is no other choice. If there's some, not primary dramatic, if people don't know, you don't subsidize it, people don't know, they can't tell, then our next step is that mission. We don't need insurance. Cannot have that insurance.
And the master plan was evident? Was evident that best course of action is to sell the property?
That's our goal, that's why we're doing this, why we built what we did. But this, the time has happened. And we need to, so we have a process, assuming argument that the board approves this subdivision, we have to go through a vote. It has to be between twenty-eight and thirty-five days for the notice. We have to vote. We got no one for the minus, we got two years. We are going to get a positive vote to sell. Then we have to get new contract to sell it and get it going. But we feel like we have to get this done before we're going to bid for insurance. Again, that is what it's the mission is. So, and those are all the different things for having. And I know there's been strong interest in adding this house to reserve, that's our goal. We know that we already have our bridge, we're ready to get this on market. So again, that's our goal. Again, so all we want to do is.
If I can, throughout the years, we've worked on a number of initiatives to restore the home, consider different uses for it, for the Fire District, for other uses. And really, the vast majority of it, just because of, not necessarily the condition of the home, but just everything that we, as a government, need to do to bring it up to today's standards, whether it's ADA complacency, whether it is today's energy quota, all those different things. It was really, really cost prohibitive. It was overwhelming compared to what our private uses. A lot of effort is put into trying to figure out the correct use.
Put an office or something in there, but all those millions and thousands for office space is just, it's just, you wouldn't expect your tax dollars to be spent on that kind of money. You can't get a fire truck in there, you can't, you know what I mean? It's not viable for firefighters of the district.
If you would just review the vote timeline.
Vote, and I had a statue. Board, the Fire District Board would have to make a determination that the house is no longer necessary for the Fire District. Done this in the Fire, in the Fire Department Master Plan. Would there be a formal vote? From that day, they have to send a referendum, mandatory referendum, at least twenty-eight, thirty-seven, someday from there. And then you have to have the vote. As soon as the vote is passed, you can actually sell it. There's some question in our mind, whether we will market the property pending that, you see how I think we're climbing back to. We don't want the vote to be about who's buying it, be about, it's going to be available. And I know the traditional sales process for that, if you have a decision, the best deal that we can, you know, for reuse is this.
But logically, needs to be supplemented first.
Yes. So that sets up the appraisal, we have to have the appraisal completed. I have had the appraisal completed, assuming that it's the dimensions that we described, twenty-two seven acres. And that makes sense, once you look at the lines, you look out the window, there's a fence. Imagine that, we follow the fence. And when we follow the fence down the road. So again, attempted to use, right, to common sense, to allow that to be, to make sense and somebody to name and purchase it in areas that was behind the master plan, et cetera. Any other questions? This is Station Two, and we have this current building, we have some plans. We have to figure out what we're going to do with this fire station, right? And so we have to play a little addition off of the west moon pit inside here, maybe for a big ladder truck, we're trying to figure out this. So that was the presentation, that was the master plan. That set the process forward to go to the Bank of America and get the property. We got the property in March. As soon as we bought the property, as anybody knows, the building was painted over here. Painted the building, we painted the fence. Because it sat for three or four years, no TLC, right? And we don't know what we're going to do with the property.
So here, it's a mischievous roof, the D H C.
Can't, anybody that wants to try to use the, all, love their, if anybody's wondering what a combination, you can have fun. We own a bank, and if you're trying to be good neighbors and try to take care of everybody. And this is all to maintain the status quo. Get the ATM roof down, get the sidewalk, merge the parking lot, the little parking lot with the larger parking lot, get the bank buildings, subdivide it off of the parking lot. We want to do this, what's been done around the village, screen up the larger Mr. Park. Hopefully, in cooperation with the village and with the town. Want to have it be a separate tax parcel, separate insurance. All the businesses, since we bought the property, all the business owners said, how can we, pure tailor shop that has stairs downstairs, and suddenly the Fire District says, there's no parking here? How is this customer going to get downstairs? Folks, we are trying to maintain the status quo in the neighborhood. There's no plan, there's no other plan, there's no nothing. All we want to do is marry these two parcels. Have a, actually, an address, an agreement with the Fire District Town. The Fire District doesn't want stop signs, you know, in all the towns. The Fire District, imagine the town parks a lot, the employees park here, they're not allowed over the fence. They want a fence for everyone. So they're parking here. Police want to park here, let's all work together in a municipal parking lot. Nothing more, nothing less. And then people that, the Fire Districts, after a long process, you can argue that the Fire Fighters, the Fire Department, trying to determine what, who's spending, we need for the bank buildings. Right? Make a decision at some point that we don't need the bank buildings. We have to go through the very same process we have to go through. With the exception of the town, where do you want to use those buildings for a necessary purpose, you can not have to go through the same process. And there's potential for the town to use it for a town hall annex. And way preliminary, we have years worth of architectural work. People figure out, we never thought we'd have some of that. So that is, but we need to get the parking lot repaired and get the stuff out and get us, just get, and get the lights fixed. Those lights, it's not working. These are things we could, no other things.
With the exception of reason why Jordan and I really exist in the work of Fire Districts. I don't think that, with the issue of nineteen North Main Street, to preserve that house or season to preserve that house, finally, after twenty plus years of failures, to see that is not possible.
And I insured when we bought it, we bought the bank building. I, I get phone calls every week. People want to buy. They want to buy the bank, they want to buy the house, et cetera. We have a ton of work, working for the village, trying to get this done. It's all, it sounds great, we are. So, and again, we can hire the builder to begin the process. Finally, totally unrelated, but we were coming here to the village. The beautiful characters, starting to blow the metal roof and decided to start the blow. I have pictures of that in the meeting. We replaced it with beautiful copper deflection. Expect because of the air in this year, the weathering, that needs some of the, for.
Different meaning.
Perfect. It's all in the application, though, again. My point is, if you're trying to follow procedure, you don't get it. The board, for Fire Districts, is trying to be cooperative, but we need your help. We need to move this, this process along, to get this house to market. We have to, for the end of the year, hopefully, some more insurance. Not waste of this, you know, you keep that whole. And I'm trying to be dramatic. Anybody who doesn't build a yard, or still call if you don't believe us. And we're meeting, telling you, you got to get that house. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you very much.
I had a couple more questions. Thank you, by the way, very much for giving us the presentation here, giving us the overview. I really appreciate it, and I've been trying to figure a bunch of things out about this. So we have, it's a very different application than what we're all seeing. So we're trying to sort our way through it as well. But, so right now, you said you have, right now, this is your property. This is the other property here, New York, it's fighting it over here. And then your other ones are, you're proposing separating the bank from the parking lot, and the bank will be a separate parcel.
Correct.
And the one that's with the hair salon, I don't know, is that vacant now?
Oh, it's exit one North Main. It's all part of one North Main hair salon, just if you want that.
Yeah, so this building right here.
It's the bank.
That's the bank.
That's part of the bank, okay.
Interestingly, not the bank, probably constructed because of the condition, whatnot. The bank is always meant to be a parcel itself.
So we're. That's nine and eleven, nine and eleven North Main Street.
Okay, I was confused by that. I thought, I didn't know they're both part of the bank as two parcels. I thought one was the hair salon.
You're not alone. It took us a good while to get a lot of people to understand why there were two parcels. Not to mention, one of the parcels is the parking in general, and then the new portion of the bank. And then the smallest parcel is just the original portion of the bank.
If you go to that other map that I sent you, Alexander, you have some notations. That might get easier, I'll put captions on it so the board gets here.
That's a good one.
Oh, I thought I sent you another one. You'll notice that on the bank parking, the bank parcel, nine eleven, there's no setback. There's no setback from nine to number one to the rear property line. There's no setbacks anywhere. I know that the board wanted to make sure that we have variance for our final setback, because zero setback for all the different, it's easy. Happy to do it, but it seems, in terms of the standards of the adjacent property, there's no setbacks to the property lines. Obviously, the census is going down the stairs. There's no, so in terms of our request for variance, there's any indication that that the properties in the median vicinity were well within the character, were five foot better than every property along the property.
And those lines were defined to definitely, for blinds in the landscape of the bank. The air conditioning unit, freestanding air conditioning unit, is a little bit of a beltier culture. So it's kind of the way those lines are defined, to be able to separate the bank.
So I think there's supposed to be a twenty foot rear setback there. You're applying for variance to make that shorter. You're saying that what the property lining is to be, follow the existing development on the property.
Again, not quite, but there's, again, there's a fence, there's an air conditioning unit. It follows the nat, it adds with nineteen North Main Street, follows the natural, where you draw on. But again, there's no, that would be the only building on that property that has any setback.
If we stick with the, if we stick with the twenty foot setback, everyone might potentially interfere with all the way of our concern issue. We might lose potentially a number of spaces trying to get it out.
Okay, so if you have a twenty foot setback, I mean, they're sold the building. You don't know what you're going to do with it yet.
We're going to preserve that municipal parking lot. We need that for the firefighters to park in. And whoever buys those building in the bank, we don't need it. It'd be something of the same, same parking requirements as the other neighbors to our property, like municipal parking lot. I assume, similar to what we have, we had a ladder, what do you call it? Starbucks, Samsung parking, right? So they're relying on municipal parking lot. As far as I know, it's pretty well with their business. So I think we just want to be consistent, saying that, you know, opposite three homes, the parking lot, that was a municipal parking lot, and serve all of those commercial businesses. Exactly the same scheme that we have here, whether we partner with anyone else, any other municipalities. They get an interview, some parking lot is some question. But I know we have people parking there on the Fire District property now. We've got to get this, I'm going to ensure appropriately, get that order going down.
A couple other questions I have. Right now, this is one parcel, bank, or your firehouse.
One separate parcel.
And then this is a gigantic parcel. Are you merging these two together?
Yes.
Okay, so you're moving, okay. So that was a question we had, is whether the total number of parcels was changing. And I thought it was, if you're splitting off the banks from here, but you're also merging.
Merging and merging a little parking lot that you're down there. So whatever's that, you're going to cut it off of the firehouse parcel and marry it to the large parking lot. So you've got a firehouse parcel, parking, bank, nineteen North Main Street.
We're not making any new parcels, we're just shifting the lines around. It's a giant shell game.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's been, that can undermine my head for a little while now, so, that's good. Okay, I'm not sure where else we want to go. Is anyone else have any questions?
No.
Anything specific to, related to the, forget the sweet meat. Accidentally, it was called a bank rescue, I guess it's more of a hurdle. Or a drive, a tie and hang, we want to refer to it. That's also when you're kind of getting, and is short term to that. Just what they did to split up the parking lots.
Yeah, my only question about that is how that would affect lighting for the parking lot. I know the banks have to be kind of overlit around the ATMs. They have, and I don't know what the status of that is.
There's one, there's one. There's one, there's one existing street light that will, uh, will maintain, surprisingly enough, with, uh, straight, you know, some of the parking, you still can maintain that one light that's there.
It comes up to the sidewalk. That would be able to take out the sidewalk, around the lights, even there, and then there's the village, village light, let's say, between the fire district parking lot.
Which is actually, we figured out, is actually a district hall fixture that just needs some repairs, though, it's the same as the fixtures, the lot, I don't know, it's a mixture, it's a fixture that just needs some repair. But we, we really, we're, we're kind of, yeah, so we were sort of betting on the fact that no one is going to really object to losing all of that insane obscene amount of bank, uh, lighting, because there, as a matter of fact, since we've since acquired the property, could a number of the fixtures, we've actually shut off, just because there's so much, and you'd be, you'd be amazed at how many people call us that. So we figured that maybe we turn down the lights a little bit, different people will start to get it.
Okay, well, that's good, thank you for saying you're thinking about that. I know, you know, like around the ATM, there's laws that say they got to blast areas with light, so if we, if you're restoring it to an appropriate lighting level, reasonably compliant with code, that sounds great.
We're not changing anything, lighting is up to the, uh, the, the status quo.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I wonder if we're scheduled for a public hearing, and, it's something where they open it, but I don't want this anybody to hear, I'd like to hear if our, if our, if we're electricians too, I, I, how about to answer concerns, be possible to hear what they have to say, don't have to do anything with it, but I, it's our.
I don't mind people commenting, I think it's premature to open a public hearing, we're still sorting out what we're doing. I obtain minting?
I, I don't hear anything wrong with, with hearing comment.
I don't do anything wrong with hearing comments either. Okay, so if anyone would like to.
What's the difference? One is formal and the other is informal.
Anyone can ask to address the board in the meeting.
Was it noticed for a public hearing?
It was noticed for a public hearing, but, well, we'll, we'll get to some of the procedural stuff first. So, uh, the, the first point is, we'd like to hear comments, if anyone has to make them. Does anyone like to raise their hand, does anyone like to give us any comments?
Who would do for a comment? Wherever you want to be.
Let's have a look at this, to you, Dave Marshall, sixty seven south main, justice, so this is great. And from a village perspective, relevant, obviously, the subdivision plan, and how we go about, where you say, which is sale, the bank, but also, uh, the office, and that is, we regards to nine and eleven, so the way the subdivision is set up right now, it wouldn't include any, any, easy access to refuges, if that went to, um, S Pro, or oxygen, it's not, now, you know, they're not used, right, so there's no, within subdivision area, you're aligned in, there may, anyone consider some opportunity, or when you look at the VCB, the village, such a business issue, of all the available uses, as a result of the subdivision presented, light uses are likely to be included from being available, simply as a result of not having the space for something like a lot of refuges or a restaurant, right? The other comment, just in terms of use, you referenced offices, right now, in the VCB, first floor offices, other than going municipal use, I believe, are not permitted, you know, except for, but office spacing, first of all, I don't, it's not VCB, it's limited office, or, yeah. Nineteen, I mean nineteen is, no, nineteen, I'm sorry, I'm getting.
You're talking about the bank.
I'm getting the bank, yes. So, so you have two different zones here, right? So the, the bank wouldn't have the availability of office on the first floor, that should be for retail and other, um, uses that engage with the public on the street. So as you think about that, you have, of course, apartment complex.
Can I just stop you there, because one of the people that have come and asked comparison purposes is a real estate, real estate office, is that, is that, is that illegal, or is it considered a real estate?
My understanding is that we might be permitted to use on the first floor, that would.
Better, better tell them, because they're the one of the people that are all, all over me.
That might predate anything, I don't know.
Yeah, so we might be early in the discussion, but, so, so the conversation of subdivision, and sort of thinking about how you, how you maximize the value on the sale, right, and who might be getting, is uniquely different than the process of deciding the subdivision, where I think in the process of deciding subdivision, you want to think about the, the current available uses, and how does that subdivision potentially, based on parking and the ability of the refuges, have an adverse impact? So there may be some consideration there, different electric vehicles today.
Yes, can I just, I mean, we, we went a little bit off, a, a little off kilter here by, um, opening this, this up for informal comment, and it's not supposed to be a debate between people in the audience and the applicants, so, you know, maybe it would be better to stick with a more formal approach, and if the board decides not to open the public hearing now, um, you know, we'll, we'll address other public comments to the board at some other time.
So absent of the back and forth, would some public comment, directed on a back and forth, be reasonable, just on?
Well, what I would recommend to the, the board is that we, um, you know, perhaps we, back, back off from this informal, debate thing, and either open the, open the, um, public hearing or not, and that's, you know, that's on me, I, I apologize for that.
I think we should open.
I, I agree. Okay, so maybe somebody should make a motion, and.
Alright, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Hoppin?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Liestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, then if, if we are going to hear, obviously, you're going to hear public comment, I would just ask that the comments, the comments to the board and, um, questions to the board.
Yep.
Thank you.
So Dave Marshall, sixty seven south main, that's the, so again, just want to compliment the conversation, um, that we just had, but also recognize, um, it is a complex issue, it is a very critical northwest quadrant of the four corners of the village, and thinking about how we engage these properties that have, here for not got used for a little while, and remain in the public, is now a staying conversation now. Um, with regards to the early master plan of the fire district, I believe there was originally two thoughts, one was getting easements from the bank, right, now it'd be more upon the fixture, um, but that was attainable, and so this proposal was come forward. To what degree has there been, and this, sorry, to board, um, not a question, but when subdividing, I suspect one could subdivide with easements embedded in the subdivision. As a simple property owner, one could say.
How so?
What I'm suggesting is a single, so again, just general comments.
And we're, we're limited to three minutes, right? Is that?
I'll be, I'll be, okay, the idea is, if you own the entire property, as you subdivide, one might be able to consider easements within it, such that the objective of the fire district may be able to preserve parking connected to the buildings that they're subdividing, and still obtain what they would like. Another comment, with regards to the parking and the municipal use of the parking, I love the idea of having another additional parking in the village, that is great. Question is, is should the subdivision occur before the agreement of municipal parking may be had with the board trustees, to determine what does that contractually look like, such that the subdivision is contingent upon a decision on that parking and that arrangement? Again, I don't know if that is something that you can do, how that works, I'm not explored prior to tonight, but it's this question of, I like the idea of having additional parking, having a municipal lot creates a use of utility for those buildings, but if it doesn't have a contractual obligation, what then might happen in the years ahead, particularly as that building might go to the sale, and as they consider the uses? So just think about those things, those things will brainstorm, you know, as I was listening back there. But again, appreciate all of it. Thanks, Dave.
We have a hand up.
Okay.
Now, Plumber, you can speak after you're, yeah, unmuted.
My apologies, I hit, hit the button by accident.
Oh, you don't want to speak?
Nope. I just want, I just want to thank the board and also the fire district for this, thank you.
You don't have any other handed up online?
Okay.
So there is one more comment, can you keep the public hearing open?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna, yes, leave it at that. Um, so, we've been trying to work through the process of getting this, this is an atypical application, as, I'm sure it's an atypical process for you. I mean, the first step in this is environmental review seeker, um, so we're still, we're working our way through how we're going to handle that. So my intention tonight was mostly just to listen, and I want to thank you guys very much for doing your presentation, and, um, we wanted to, um, I wanted to hear a little more about your schedule, because, um, we're talking about possibly having some special meetings to try to move this along. And, um, so you said you have, um, schedule, I think I heard by the end of the year, you're hoping to have lots of stuff resolved, and lots of stuff that takes time.
Uh, as soon as possible, obviously, again, and we've got to build in a vote, you know, want to have the vote in the summer, we have the vote, meet part of the house, I, I think we just hope to have the vote sometime in September, and still have to go through a board process, fire commissioner process, to make that this weekend, the vote, we have to work with their meetings, et cetera, et cetera, and so, I, I think if, you know, getting this, uh, in the next, you know, I don't think we reasonably expected that the approval was going to come tonight, uh, hopefully, you know, in time for August, the, the, the board's August meeting, unless there's real issues, I, uh, that are raised, it would certainly be appreciated, that would allow us, our meeting, uh, our, our meeting in August, the fire district will be August tenth, for some reason, the approval, I think it's August tenth, it's the second Thursday, uh, and so, uh, i- if the board did approve it, that we could, we could potentially approve the sale at that Thursday meeting of, of August, and then schedule a vote for September to give us enough time to get it hopefully sold by the end of the calendar year. If I can just respond to a couple, just for the board's, trustee Marshall's comments, uh, the fire district owns the property, people are parking in it now, and continue to allow people to park, whether anybody ever joins, then it will still agree with it, or we, potentially, we will allow people to park, because we need the firefighters to get to the firehouse, not the park, and so, potentially, we could restrict areas in the parking lot to park, so that we always have spaces for the firefighters, yes, ten years, five years trying to get this, sixty years without any parking, we're not conveying the parking lot, ever. Right, so no worries about this potentially conveying, and with regard to potential refuges used, uh, at the bank, we're so far from determining what we're going to have, why not preserve the parking lot, as if for some reason, if those bank buildings go for sale, and there's an issue, I'm sure that any sales will be contingent on getting whatever building approvals, might be necessary to operate a restaurant, uh, whatever it's going to be in that building, and if we have to adjust the lot lines at that time to make a sale, that may be a situation that the board considers, whether they're going to sell it for a restaurant, or sell it for something else.
Or provide the appropriate easements necessary for servicing a dumpster.
We do that behind Thursdays, right, Thursdays, uh, Thursdays dumpsters through an easement through our parking lot, again, we'll continue to provide that, again, so far out in the future, can't even think about that, but again, in the short term, like to maintain that, our municipal parking lot, maximize it for people's use, particularly the tailor, and like Newcom's, uh, buildings, there is people's going to get in out of that, uh, place of mine.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you, well, um, we've been listening to you, I appreciate your candor and going over everything, um, we're certainly interested in being cooperative with our adjacent fire department municipalities, um, so, I, we would like to keep moving discussion on this along, um, what, when would people like to schedule a meeting, a next meeting to follow up on this? Stick to a Wednesday, is that preferred?
Do we need to do that, or is the August meeting?
The August meeting is on August seventh, so it is before their meeting.
Would that give them enough time?
I mean, just to have, you know, a little wiggle room, because, isn't your meeting the eight?
That's the Saturday, Thursday, I'm starting on my calendar, it must be.
So the next day.
The next day.
Yeah, is that giving them enough time?
Right, so I, I would be, you know, just to be able to smooth out any, anything that might, uh, might appear, I would, I would recommend a meeting the end of July.
Like, say, in two weeks or three weeks?
Like the thirty first. So that's a week before our, our scheduled meeting.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
I would not be in town for that.
Oh, neither will I, it's okay, Thursday, we'll cover for you.
Is there a preferred, the opinion twenty fourth and then thirty first? I always appreciate having as many people here as possible.
I could do, I am here the twenty fourth.
Sure.
I wouldn't be able to be here for the twenty fourth, but if we have a quorum, don't let, you know, don't let that whole thing suck.
So we have a choice of four, four people, it sounds like.
David's been here for the.
Yeah.
Application, too.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about me, so, yeah.
So what's, what's it going to be? So the twenty fourth versus the thirty first, one Katie can't make and one Jared can't make.
I can't make the thirty first.
Okay.
Okay, twenty fourth.
Okay, our regular six thirty time work for everybody. Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion to keep the, uh, public hearing open, and continue discussion on July twenty, and I'm kind of hoping at that time that we'll factor in your, the things you presented, and I want to make sure we, make, figure out where we're going to do with the environmental review, we need to classify this as type one and type two, um, and we've had some discussions about that, but I would hope to get, get that clarified by then, and then, um, we'll know exactly our next steps in the review, so, um, that's one of the things that we've been wondering about, so, um, thank you guys very much for the presentation.
Thank you, is there anything that the board needs between now and the twenty fourth, I know internally you're going to figure things out, is there anything you need from, from the fire district at all?
Certainly, we always encourage a visit, if you want to do a walkthrough at any point, to let us know as well.
Yeah, I'm, well, I don't think we, we know all of our next steps yet, we're still starting to sort this out due to being an atypical application, we don't normally see, but we want to, you know, keep moving forward with you guys, so, um, um, sounds like, did I make a motion to keep the hearing open? And do we actually vote on that?
You did, it's to set a special meeting for the twenty fourth.
At six thirty?
At six thirty.
And do we actually vote on that?
Not yet, no.
Okay, okay, so that motion is still out there?
Yeah.
Throws it out.
What was it?
Is there someone's not muted?
Okay.
Was there a second?
A second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Hoppin?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Liestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Appreciate it, thank you, but I don't have much additional information, thank you, thank you.
Can we clarify how we left the public hearing for two courtney, when, when the application was denied?
I believe the public hearing was closed before you.
We didn't close it.
Did we not?
No.
Alright, we'll close the public hearing then.
Yeah.
I won't, we can.
I'll vote to close the public hearing for two courtney circle.
Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Hoppin?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Liestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And should we vote to reaffirm the decision? Or is that not...
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, since, since it may have been procedurally correct, I'll make, I'll make the same motion to deny the application for the reasons stated previously tonight.
I'll second it. Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Hoppin?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Liestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the motion was for two courtney circle, not the fire district.
Yes.
Mr. Fox is here for information on Fifty State Street.
Fifty State Street?
Yep.
Okay.
At the last meeting, and he wasn't able to be here.
What, I just want to ask other board members, this wasn't on the agenda, I wasn't prepared for this.
We talked about, you might...
Was this, was this something discussed at the last meeting, that it wasn't here?
They were not, the applicants didn't show up, and we were going to hear from them afterwards. And they got in contact with the building inspector yesterday, which was after the agenda was already sent out, so.
Is, I'm sorry, is there a pending application?
No, there's always information on, no application.
So, what do, what do we want to do with this?
Hear it.
There's somebody here.
Yeah.
I guess I don't have a problem with hearing what they have to say.
Yeah, no, you're here.
Yeah, let's...
I do have, if it's okay, I do have a quick question about the last applicant here. Because I have a, I have a number of planning board for many, many years now, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what in this application would even warrant me to think that type one, I actually never needed coordinating here.
Steve, that's really inappropriate, we're not going to entertain that question now. It's not a public conference, and even if it were, it's not appropriate to question the board.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Thank you.
Is Fifty State Street coming?
Sounds like people are okay, okay, people are okay with it.
Thanks for taking the time, Charlie Fox, building inspector, sitting here with the folks for the vote. They are, oh, you know, they...
No, there's no material.
Yeah, sorry.
She probably brought her own from last time.
Just to refresh people's minds, we have some very conceptual stuff.
Thank you.
Basically, the vote that we said is very successful, which is the Pittsburgh, to the point where they need more space. We were kind of exploring the idea of doing in addition to the back of the, their buildings, our dumpster closure currently is the plaza. Relocating the dumpster closure to a different location on the site. They are basically at the point where like, they either need to increase the size of the building, or they're going to start buying new building, possibly outside of the village to build it. So, this is the land reeds, other twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two square feet addition, identical to what's currently there. Just kind of extending the building towards the east. The owners have spoke to some of the neighbors that back up to Norfield, and it seems like they've got some positive responses. So, we're kind of just here to feel out the board, get some feedback, this is something that would be achievable. So, we'll make a strong application.
Everyone get one of these?
Yeah, I think we all got one, right?
Okay, I got two, so.
Oh.
Sorry, I don't know, someone missed one.
Gotcha.
Okay, well, so, I mean, your first step would be to submit an application, and then we could, then this, for, without an application at hand, we're very limited in what we can comment on. Did you have a question for us about application process?
Well, I mean, it's a unique situation, because it's right on the lot, right? That's one, so we'd need a variance. You know, kind of just getting the temperature, because this is not your typical expansion, yes, or...
We see lots of additions.
What's that?
We see lots of additions.
A lot of residential, for sure, that's a commercial in the village.
If I may just jump in, the board's not permitted to prejudge an application.
Okay.
So, they can't really give you answers to whether they would approve something, or else there's, you know...
Yeah, we understand that's frustrating, but, you know...
No, no, I mean, there's sometimes a do, there's sometimes a no, I can say.
Yeah.
So, we were kind of just coming in here on a friendly, you know, note.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to feel everything out, if you're not privy to tell me anything, that's what we're forced to...
Well, genuinely, it was helpful to receive other people's presentation, because I have a good reason that was released.
Good, good.
It's a great story, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So...
And I now know more about the Pittsburgh Fire Department.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the things that we often look at, I will say this, at applications, is we'll take a look at lighting, we'll take a look at drainage, we'll usually take a look at landscaping, particularly for commercial. If you're not causing problems, you're making the parking lot appropriately illuminated, you can talk to Steve, he can tell you what the code says for lighting.
We're not changing anything on the parking lot, we're just taking the dumpster closure and moving it elsewhere on the property line, property.
What there is, is there's the garage in the back, the freestyle garage, and then there's the main structure. And what we'd like to do is to put an addition that would connect those two buildings. And give us access to warehouse space. I do a lot of refinishing work, so it can be better use of carpentry shop to work on furniture and bring it back up to sustainable fashion. And so, just the, that was what the, the main thrust of it was, was to get the furniture stored footage and to make it all one building as opposed to two separate buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we made two longstanding problems, or by the neighborhood, down those screen, and moving the dumpster closure off of the red, behind the residential home, and putting it behind the, the lumberyard where it's that...
There's some history on this, we went through full site plan approval, I want to say it was sixteen, maybe, maybe a little over fifteen, sixteen? Well, because there weirdly was none, you know, back in the 15s, 16s, 17s. So, at that point, that's where the, the, the village wanted the dumpster. And so, since we had this need, and then we also heard some of the neighbors were like, okay, this might be a win-win for everybody, so.
Yeah, charming, but I can't get by, it's pretty cool.
So, we, you know, we're just kind of coming here, feeling our way out.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't want to go and jump through everything, because, you know, ultimately, they were not going to, this is only disturbing like a small, small portion of the overall site. The overall site is basically buttoned up and too compliant at this point, so.
So, right now, between the two buildings, it's nothing but a garbage closure.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, it's about twenty-one, twenty-two square feet, and so, getting this space for them will help them ensure that they can continue to grow their business and, you know, keep their roots in, that's it.
Okay, cool, yeah, well, like I said, the things we often take a look at is drainage, lighting, landscaping. You can work with the building inspector, he can tell you what our code says for all of that. So, I think there might be a light fixture, if you're planning on removing it, it's just going to be a matter of, well, you know, making the parking lot illumination work. Then again, talk to the building inspector about that, he, I think he can tell you what all our code requirements are.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar with that, great detail. So, we, you know, we're just trying to come up with something, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, over the years.
The application deadline for August meeting has passed, but you can submit for the September meeting.
That's fine, I mean, we have all the citing, site grading, framing, we have all that already in place, so it's a more of just plopping addition of the site. All right, great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thirty, now that my packet has been moved all over the place, I've watched my agenda. There is minutes?
Yeah, one minute, that was left out from our last meeting, very short.
And I think those are among the shortest minutes possible.
And if they're longer than then, next time.
I remember seeing them in some papers. Or were they?
On the very last page.
The very last page.
One page?
Yeah.
Well, C theory, C theory notice and...
Katie, I think we looked at these long ago.
What was the property address for which the public hearing was closed?
Two.
Two courtney circle, I mean? Or are you talking, no, you said...
On May first.
Oh, that one should have been a workshop, right? That, those minutes?
Yeah, this one says workshop.
Yeah, it wasn't a workshop.
Oh.
Well, we had a workshop and a meeting.
We had it, we had two meetings the same night.
Yeah, we had only workshop.
This is just a minute for the workshop?
Yeah.
So, that one, we basically, we had a meeting together, we took a look at the, at the large plans on the table. Steve gave you this presentation on the dumpster tote area for five state.
Okay, so should we just clarify that it was pre-reviewed application materials for the five states?
Are, are you going to be doing minutes for workshops going forward? I don't think historically did...
Do we need to do that?
You don't need to do minutes for a workshop unless you make a determination. And the determinations you make in the public meeting.
Right. Right.
I mean...
The workshops are also public, right?
They are public, absolutely public.
But, yeah, we don't need to do meetings if we don't have any votes.
There's no action, so.
There's no action. And I don't think this board has ever...
We haven't ever put any...
Workshop minutes before.
No, that's a good tradition.
What, to have workshops or have no minutes?
We have no minutes for a workshop.
We should respect tradition.
Yeah.
Okay, so you think...
It should be respected.
So, is there any reason to start now, is what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree.
All right.
Thank you for bringing it together.
What's the procedure, do we need a motion for it, or just so we know?
Well, I don't think we need a procedure to do nothing.
It's administrative, and we don't need it.
Yeah, I don't think we need to take a vote to...
Thank you, but no.
Thank you for putting it together.
Yeah, of course. Very pretty.
Okay.
Motion, make a motion to close the...
I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Hoppin?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Liestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.